Okay, this is our public hearing tonight about our millage rate changes. And so you've noticed some of you that are regular tenders or those that watch us online. We have a couple of special guests here with us tonight. I've asked them if they would come and be part of this process because they have really put a lot of work into this budget process. Everybody has just been fantastic working as a team. And everybody's worked well this year of working within their budgets and helping us obtain our goals and increasing our cash flow. And it's just been a real blessing. And so some of our constitutional officers could not be here with us, or maybe one of them may be in transit to get here. But we could not have presented a budget and everything that we're doing with this millage rate if we hadn't have had everybody's cooperation and understanding. Because what we're doing for the county millage rate, there's actually no change in the millage rate for the county if you live in the unincorporated area. And then if you live in the city, it's going up just a little over 1 percent. And being able to maintain that level of funding and be able to work together on a budget standpoint has just been an incredible year. So I've asked them to come and be with us as part of the team. And if y'all got anything y'all would like to add, I'll turn it over if y'all have anything you want additionally said.
I would like to just say a word to our citizens. Can y'all hear me? I'm usually pretty soft spoken. I need to begin by letting y'all know, I have a standing commitment every Thursday night. I have for several years. So if I'm not traveling and I'm not sick, I have another place in Chickamauga that I'm committed to be. So I'm gonna make a few very brief comments and then with y'all's permission, I'm gonna ease on out.
Absolutely.
The last couple of years have been tough. We all know that. It's been hard on all of us with the tax increase, the financial hardship the county has been under. For those of us in county government, it's been a challenge as well. We have to create a balance between limited financial resources and still deliver quality services to our citizens. And finding that balance is sometimes tough. I'm convinced, I've been in county government for, going on nine years now, I'm convinced that none of the elected officials that are currently in place created or contributed to our financial hardship. But what we find is, it has now fallen to us to create and deliver the solution.
Yep.
While we find a solution for the financial hardship, we also have to continue delivering quality services to our citizens. That's not easy. So what I have seen is that this group of elected officials, we are working together very hard. We are strong-minded individuals, y'all figured that out by now. And we have different ways of looking at things. Well, that combination sometimes can lead to differences of opinion and strong disagreements. But I am convinced, the legacy of this group of public officials will not be our disagreements, our differences. The legacy that we are going to leave behind is that we restored and resolved the financial situation we have. We resolved our financial strong footing, that we set aside and worked through all of our differences, and that we create a future that our children can be proud of. That is the legacy that we are going to leave. I would like to thank all of our public officials, those who are able to be with us tonight and some who are not able to be. It has been a continual working process previously, currently, and it's gonna continue into the future. I'm proud to be a part of this group of folks. And I'm proud to try to serve the citizens of our county. So I will close with, I want the message that I'm trying to present tonight to be a word of hope and encouragement to our citizens. Because there are better days and a brighter future ahead for Walker County. So thank you for your attention and I'm...
Very well said, thank you. Sheriff?
Okay. Be hard to top that, that was very well said. First of all, I'd like to say, I need, there's three people I need to recognize within the sheriff's office that worked very, very hard on our budget preparation this year. In years past, up until the last couple of years, I've taken it on myself to try to be the person that worked through the budget. But over the last year, Major Freeman, Chief DeBty has worked on the budget process along with me. And then this year, we decided to bring some more people to the table to work on the budget. So Major Mike Freeman, Chris Anderson, and...
McNabb?
Bobby McNabb. I was looking at his brother back there.[348.13][348.13](laughter) He'll probably shoot me now. But Bobby McNabb, Major Freeman, and Chris Anderson put in, I won't say hundreds, but they put in a lot of hours going over the budget, really with a fine-toothed comb to look at the areas that we felt like we could work on and areas that maybe we had overbudgeted in previous years, and areas that we had underbudgeted in previous years to try to bring a true budget to the table when we presented it to the commissioner during the work session. And that's what we did. We set aside, I believe it was about a four-hour work session or something like that, and we probably ended up with about a five-hour work session, but it was a good work session. And I wanna publicly thank the commissioner and his staff, Robert and the others that worked with us in that initial meeting. We worked about five hours on, and we went line by line by line. And if we did not verbally comment on each line item, we had notes to each line item as to why we thought that there should be an increase or should be a decrease in some cases. Trying to bring, to make them knowledgeable of exactly why we needed what we needed in order to provide the services that the law requires that we provide. My budget is the largest budget within county government, I guess, assuming it is, separated from county government. And so we have a big responsibility to the taxpayers and to the citizens. And what we were able to do is, we presented a work budget and then about 10 days later or so, we came back for another work session and sat down and were able to look at, you know, what we really, really need and what we would like to have. Now, what we would like to have is not unreasonable by no means, and I think they would agree with me, that it's justified with this county as large as it is, 445 square miles with nearly 70,000 people. And no telling how many thousands that are transit through the county each day. But we came to an agreement very fast, and it's a workable, doable budget that we're gonna work with this next year. And we did not have the first cross word, unkind word, disagreement that I can think of. And I appreciate you hearing us out and working with us.
Yes, sir.
This process, this year, I had suggested to the commissioner last year that I thought this would be the best process for us as, especially the constitutional officers and probably department heads would be to do this. And I appreciate him changing this format so that we could get to this point where we are here tonight, his final meeting to set the millage rate. And again, like Carter, the clerk of court said, we all know that the burden of debt that we have on us, and hopefully one day we can all sit here and that will be behind us and we can move forward as a progressive county and provide the services and have the resources to do more with, and at the same time not cost the taxpayers more money. With that said, I have a commitment. Our Stockin' Full of Love, I'll plug it right now. Our Saw Hop is Sunday night from 7 till 11. And our car show, Classic Car Show and Truck Show is Labor Day, has been for about 25 years at the Walker County Civic Center. So if you enjoy looking at mint, condition automobiles, trucks, all types of classes there at the Civic Center. This is our largest fundraiser for our Christmas program called the Stockin' Full of Love. And so we've got the last planning meeting at the Civic Center tonight, and I need to get there by 6:30. So I'm gonna ease out like Carter did. But thank you for being here, thank you for being involved in the process. And I think we're on, well, we are on the right track of being unified and understanding each other's needs and working together. And that makes a big difference, it really does.
Thank you, Sheriff. Very good, thank you. Appreciate Carter Brown and Sheriff Wilson coming and speaking with us. I know they've taken time out of their busy schedule, but felt it was really important for the citizens to see this is the way local county government should work. And we have reached that level of performance, and it's only gonna get better. We've got the momentum going in the right direction, and it's really gonna be exciting over the next few years as we turn this ship around and move the right direction and getting everybody working as a team and working in unison together will really make a true difference.
Yes, sir.
So very, very happy. We do have some time here, we're gonna let y'all speak from the floor here in just a moment, but just to add a little additional commentary here and talk about the actual notices in the paper. It is a little confusing, the way the state of Georgia has set the law up to articulate the millage rate. So the notice of tax proposal, I'm gonna read the, just the last paragraph of this, which really has the meat in it of what the rates are doing. And it's, gotta listen real close, 'cause it is a little bit confusing the way they have this written out, and we have to follow this format. It says, "This tentative increase will result in a millage rate of 9.838 in the unincorporated area." That's the millage rate that it is currently, so that rate is not changing. And 13.33 mills in the incorporated area. A lot of times, we don't think about the difference of incorporated and unincorporated. But your unincorporated is what we normally refer to locally as the county. And the incorporated is what we refer to as our cities. And so the county rate, for those that have property in the county, is not changing, but inside the city limits, the way the rollbacks are done, there's gonna be a slight increase there. So anytime you have an increase in revenues, even if your millage rates don't change, you have an increase in revenue, you have to have the public meetings and have a time for the citizens to speak about the additional revenue that you're gonna be taking in. So then it says, "An increase of 0.00 mills in the unincorporated area." So again, that just reiterates, the unincorporated county part is zero increase. And a 0.177 mills in the incorporated areas. Without the tentative tax increase, the millage rate will be no more than 9.827 mills in the unincorporated area and 13.135 mills in the incorporated area. And then they give a couple of examples here. The proposed tax increase for a home with a fair market value of $100,000 is approximately 0.00 in the unincorporated. And in the incorporated area, or excuse me, and $7.64 in the incorporated area. And then he gives another example. Proposed tax increase for non-homestead property with a fair market value of $75,000 is approximately 0.00 in the unincorporated and $6.03 in the incorporated area. So these are the examples that we have to follow those guidelines. Again, if you live in the county area, there's no property tax changes at all. When you look at the five-year history, which I don't have a copy here with me, you will see, okay, thank you, the five-year history, you'll see that overall revenue increase is 1.89 percent total. It's the very last number on the five-year history. So the increased revenue is $264,505. Some of that increase is brought in by expansion and growth in our community. I think we had about 75 new homes that come onto the tax roll of new construction. And also, if someone had an increase in their assessed value, and some properties go down in the assessed value. So when you look at the total digest, the digest of taxable property overall increased. And so we are capturing that growth, which is what you wanna have every year, to offset exemptions that people get, or we're having a, across the state, the way they've changed the, what used to be referred to as the birthday tax for motor vehicles, where you would pay a tax every year on your birthday to renew your abollorum tax on your vehicle, that has been phasing out and new purchases are collected as a, more of a sales tax form at time of purchase. So our motor vehicles in 2013 was almost $108 million of taxable vehicles. Now that's down to just a little under $33 million. So you've had a significant decline, about, almost a 75 percent decline in actual taxable vehicles that are collected through the county, and that most of that, a new tax goes to the state. So the local government's got the shortfall. So again, I realize that this is a very complex system. This is not something we made up. We have to follow the state guidelines. The tax assessor office works real hard with our office, with our comptroller, to make sure and double-check the numbers and make sure everything is to the statute, and in conjunction also with the tax commissioner and her staff. And then all this information goes down and is reviewed by the Department of Revenue, all the way down to the ads that are published in the paper. They actually take a measure and stick out and measure the ad size to make sure all that's in compliance and all of the wording. So there's a tremendous amount of detailed steps and procedures, and there is a very strong oversight to make sure everything is made public. One of the things that we have to do is we have to hold a minimum of three public meetings. One of those meetings is required to be in the morning time before noon, and then one of them is required to be at least 6:00 PM or after. And so we had one meeting last week here at 6 o'clock. We had a meeting this morning at 10 o'clock, and we held it at the Walker County Civic Center to try to be more centrally located. And then we're now having the third and final meeting here tonight at 6:00 to bring this information forward and have open discussion and give any feedback or comment that any citizen or taxpayer would like to address at this time. So if you would like to speak to this one item, I know some of you may have other things that you wanna talk about tonight, and we will have a time at the end of our last meeting that we open up the floor for public comment, and you can bring forward any topic of discussion dealing with county government that you would like to. But since this is a public hearing about the millage rate, all comments will need to be in the scope of the millage rate that we are going to be setting here tonight. So if you do like to speak, we'd like for you to come up to the podium so we can better hear you, people can see you. Also, we can capture this on our cameras so this can be viewed by folks that are able to be here. And also, if you'll state your name for the record, 'cause we have to capture that data for our minutes. So is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak in anything regarding the millage increase?
Oliver.
Yes. Okay. Yes, please come up.
Been in the county for a little over 30 years. Invested here, rental property, and worked hard for what I've got, from nothing to, that my family might have a little more, you know, living the American dream. But what I have to say tonight is, you know, we've faced a lot of increases, Commissioner, and the water increased twice, landfill increased, property taxes has increased. That hurt us across the board in our business. We added our Langer tax, 10 percent square foot fire tax. And correct me if I'm wrong, but we adopted a tax for rental property that landlords are taxed on appliances, refrigerators, and stoves. Is that correct? That's not correct? Okay. We got the T-Splash tax. I mean, I feel taxed to death, yeah. Especially having multiple properties, I think we should have put a cap on it. I shared that with you, when we put the 10 percent on the fire. I think farmers should have been included on some kind of a cap, that their land is not taxed, just their homes. It's hurt them across the board with multiple acres. It's hurt me across the board with multiple rental properties, not just on my home. If it was just on my home, it wouldn't be as bad. I'm opposed to the tax increase. I think if we can't work within what we have, something's wrong. We've been taxed and taxed and taxed. And I know you have a mountain to climb. We all have a mountain to climb. But for the people of this county, this is a four county. This is not Coteau's County. This is Walker County. We don't have 75 running through it. We've got mountains going everywhere. State owns a lot of it. We don't get property taxes for it, I understand that. I just wanna stand and oppose of any new tax at this point. I feel that we've been taxed to the point that it's hurting our community. I've heard farmers talk about going to Alabama to farm for cheaper property taxes. So I've had a little bit of input from some people about it. But personally, on my own, from my aspect of it, I just wanna oppose that, go on the record as opposing any new taxes on our community.
Yeah, appreciate you coming to speak. One thing on clarification, on the public safety fee, when we restructured that last year, there has been a fire fee that's been in place for quite some time. And it was, there was a residential rate, it was a commercial and industrial rate. And so what we tried to do was to give a more fair approach to that. And so everybody who's paying residential was paying $130 per resident. And so you had people in a thousand-square-foot home paying the same thing as people in a 4,000-square-foot home. And so that was an unfair proportion. And so when we took and revamped that and made it only on the structures, okay, so it's not on the land, it's only on the structures, based off square foot, we made the minimum of $90. So anyone that lived in a 1,300-square-foot structure or less got a reduction, which was about 48 percent of all of our residents in Walker County. We changed the name of it, changed it to public safety fee, but about 48 percent of our residents got a reduction on that. And those that had the larger structures and the bigger commercial buildings and things that are higher fire risk and take more resources to put out, had to pay more in that. And so we do have a lot of people in our community that live in less than 1,300 square foot, almost 50 percent. The landfill, as we talked about, you know, was losing a half a million dollars a year, every year. It's documented through the audits. And so we cut expenses, we're working with four less staff members there. We have streamlined the operation to try to be more effective, and then also, we had to increase some of the rates there to get that to a point of being profitable, because what we were doing, that money had to come somewhere. So that was coming out of your property taxes. And the four largest customers that was utilizing that facility were not even within our own state. They found they were getting discounted rates, and so they were importing construction demolition waste into our landfill and filling up our landfill at a reduced rate as a commercial business. And all of us, as the residents and taxpayers of the county, were subsidizing that by over a half a million dollars every year. So we changed that structure and that rate, and those four largest customers are no longer doing business with us, which was okay. So we've had to make some tough decisions. We know everyone has sacrificed. I think you will talk to any of our departments, any of our elected officials. The county is running more efficient, running leaner, and working and doing more with less. We have our road superintendent here tonight, I mean, he can testify to you that he's got less staff and has more work to do. And so everybody is being asked to step up and carry the burden and the load, because we know that our county's in a financial distress, and it's very important that we all work together and move forward. And with the Earl Langer fee that we had to impose to pay off that, this tax cycle in 2018 and the 2019 tax cycle, that will go away 100 percent. So when you look on your property tax bill where it says, "Public health facility service fee that started last year," that was a three-year payout cycle to settle three lawsuits. And we were able to do that and get that negotiated settlement without any interest charges, without any court costs, and without any attorney fees from the other parties. And so that was a great settlement for the citizens of Walker County to be able to get that, where we're not accruing interest on $8.7 million. It was hundreds of thousands of dollars that we were able to negotiate with Earl Langer and get that off. The resolution, all the documentation, all of that, for that to roll off after the 2019 tax cycle has already been completed. It was done last year. It's already been sent to the assessor's office, it's been sent to the tax commissioner's office. That public health facility fee will go away 100 percent, and we will have Earl Langer paid 100 percent. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to address, Michael, to you and to everyone, just from my perspective, from the economic development perspective, because I agree with you, Michael, I really do. The burden is real, and all the new taxes, it is a burden on everyone. It really, truly is. But the reality here is that the alternative to what we're doing is unthinkable. Because to not do so, take these responsible measures, to not do so will result in a spiral, an economic spiral in which we would not ever recover from that. If you just really think about it, when you have that kind of debt, these taxes should have been raised over these last 15 or 16 years regularly. And quite honestly, it was irresponsible to not do so. And this team would rather look at you in the eye and do what is right economically that protects our kids and the generations after that. Failure to do what we're doing may sound good, but the truth is, the spiral begins and no one ever pulls out of it, because you're gonna get pure politicians back in these decision-making chairs that are gonna do things that are convenient for politics instead of doing things that help people, that really result in helping people. So, Mike, I just wanna agree with you. I understand exactly what you're saying. And it needs to be more, it needs to be a lot more, but there's only, we're taking it step by step and responsibly managing this thing back to where we can all be proud and get our respect and get our economic integrity back in place for these follow-up generations. And it is an honor to do that for you, at least I speak for myself. It's an honor to take that on, but it's not easy work. Thank you.
Very well said, very well said. Anyone else like to speak tonight about the millage rate? Okay. Hearing none, we will close out this public hearing. Now at this time, we will call the meeting to order for a special call meeting of the governing authority. This is Thursday, August 30th at 6:31 PM. We have already had our pledge and our invocation to our flag. The first item on our agenda is Resolution R 33-18 to set the Walker County millage rate at the current rate of 9.838 mills in the unincorporated area and 13.330 in the incorporated area. So in your packets, you should have a document of the resolution. Resolution R 33-18, Walker County, Georgia, 2018 tax levy pursuant to the authority vested tax levy pursuant to the authority vested in the Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia. And it's appealing that the total property subject to levy for maintenance and operation after allowances for exemptions, deductions, is nine hundred million, four hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars for the unincorporated area of Walker County, four hundred and two million, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars for the incorporated area of Walker County. I have the undersigned or being duly elected hereby levy taxes and fixed rates as followed. We have a final digest, a final gross village rate, fifteen point nine six six meals with an insurance rollback of three point four nine two meals and a sales tax rollback of two point six three six meals for a net village rate in the unincorporated area of nine point eight three eight. In the unincorporated area, the gross village rate is also the same, of fifteen point nine six six meals, with the sales tax rollback of two point six three six meals. So you can see there that that insurance rollback of three point four nine two meals is the difference in the village rate between the incorporated area and the unincorporated area. That is basically a franchise fee or tax that is paid by all insurance companies that do business in the state of Georgia. They report that information to the state, to the partner revenue, and in October of every year, those funds are dispersed. And so that's what creates the difference. And so to maintain the village rate with no change in the unincorporated area of the nine point eight three eight, which is what we currently have, that leaves the difference in the two village rates being the insurance rollback amount. Approved and adopted this the thirtieth of August, two thousand and eighteen. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll sign this into the record. This will be attested by Rebecca Wooden, our clerk. And then there's some additional documents here that goes to the state. This is a PT thirty-two dash one compilation of the village rate rollback and percentage increase or change in the property taxes for two thousand and eighteen. So this has also been signed by the chairperson of the Board of the Tax Assessors on August seventh, two thousand and eighteen. So this is one of the documents that goes to the state.
Okay. So this is just the same copy of this?
One unincorporated, one incorporated. Okay, thank you. Yes, so this one here is the unincorporated. This is the same document that reflects the incorporated. Thank you. our record to go along with the state. So that is complete. This time, number two, is the opening of the bids for the Walker County Local Maintenance Asphalt Resurfacing Project, number two thousand and eighteen dash one. We do have the log here, these bids, per the bid request for proposal was to be submitted today, Thursday, August the thirtieth, by noon, to the commissioner's office. We also have the advertisement that was run in the messenger, advertising this request for proposal. And what we are looking at here, this is a, for local government, soliciting competitive sealed bids for the qualified contractors for a project consisting of asphalt overlay and striping with additional patching and leveling of Nikajack Road located on the east side of Lookout Mountain and Nikajack Lane. Nikajack Lane is the road that runs down beside Chattanooga Valley Baptist Church. And so this would be paving Nikajack Lane all the way to the church, all the way to the main highway intersection. They would skip over Highway one ninety-three and then continue all the way to the top of the mountain, which is all approximately four point four miles of county road. The time allowed for performance will be until November first, two thousand and eighteen. The term and time of payment from our T-Splash, so this is the first road that we will be paying out of our T-Splash that started this year, and then using the local Lamig funding from the state for the project is within ten business days of completion of the project. No proposal guaranteed is required, but bids become binding upon submission. Bidding documents, including specifications, can be obtained online at Walker County, Georgia, GA.gov-public-notices or the Walker County Commissioner's Office located at one oh one South Duke Street, Lafette, Georgia, beginning at noon on August the fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Bids should be typed or printed and submitted in the lobby of the Walker County Commissioner's Office located at one oh one South Duke Street, Lafette, Georgia, three oh seven two eight. Bidding will remain open until noon, August thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Bids received after the designated time will not be considered. The owner of the project is Walker County. Bids will be opened in public at six o'clock on August the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, at the special call meeting of the sole commissioner of Walker County. Public meetings will be held in Walker County Courthouse Annex Three Building at two oh one South Main Street in Lafette. All bids will remain subject to acceptance for fifteen days after the date of the bid is open, opening. Walker County Government Reserves the right to reject any and all bids. So we have this information. We do have the bid log file on August the twenty-ninth at four fifteen. Tally Construction submitted a bid packet on August thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, today at ten thirty-five. Northwest Georgia Paving submitted a bid also today at ten fifty-eight. CW Matthews submitted a bid, and also today at eleven fifteen, Bartow Paving has submitted a bid. We have these bid packets here. All of these bids have been sealed, they've not been opened. I'm just picking these up in random order. Or I guess maybe we should go by the list. I guess we have them in the list. She's got me organized. Tally Construction is the first one here that we're going to open. We will not read all the details of this information here tonight. We will see if there's a cover letter or any maybe basic information that we'll disclose, and then the team will take these bids and go through them and see if they meet all of the qualifications of the specification that was put out, and also insurance requirements and so forth. So here is the requirement, contract document, see if there's an actual summary page here. There ought to be some pricing here somewhere. Okay, here we go, the last page. Okay, we had this broken down into several sections here. So we have number ten, asphalt patching including milling of Nikajack Road. Quantity, estimated quantity is four hundred. The pricing here is a hundred and twenty-six dollars per unit, which is fifty thousand four hundred dollars, if they've done the math correctly, which we will verify. Next one here is the nine point five five millimeter blend asphalt topping including tack coating for Nikajack Road. Four thousand quantity, dollar amounts a hundred and eighteen dollars, a hundred and eighteen dollars per unit, that's four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Temporary striping, quantity of twenty, is eight hundred and thirty-five dollars per unit, sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. The nine point five millimeter limestone asphalt, including tack coating for Nikajack Lane, we're using a different spec product on the mountain road. We're using a blended material that was recommended to us that would give better traction. So the, for the Nikajack Lane, which is the standard limestone asphalt, was bid at a hundred and eight dollars and twenty-five cents, which is forty-three thousand three hundred dollars. Temporary striping for Nikajack Lane of one point six is eight hundred and thirty-five dollars for one thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. The proposal shall remain in effect for thirty days. This is from Tally Construction, it's seventeen fifty-one McFarland Road, was submitted by Scott Samples. They did not give a grand total, so I don't know what that grand total is, but we will provide that information once we go through everything. Okay, the next sealed bid here is from Northwest Georgia Paving. You see, this is still a sealed document, it has not been opened or been tampered with. Y'all can see the thickness of these packets, there's a lot of requirements, so it's every one's time, and to make sure we go do everything properly, we're going to go through all of these documents. And so we just basically want to cover with you tonight, for the public record, the pricing. Okay, here we go. Okay, again, this is from Northwest Georgia Paving. First item, asphalt patching including milling for Nikajack Road, quantity of four hundred. Unit price is a hundred and forty-five dollars, subtotal of fifty-eight thousand. Next item, the nine point five five millimeter blend asphalt topping including tack coating for Nikajack Road, quantity of four thousand, unit price is a hundred and ten dollars per unit, subtotal of four hundred and forty thousand dollars even. Temporary striping for Nikajack Road, quantity of twenty, unit price nine hundred and thirty-five dollars for a subtotal of eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Next item, the nine point five millimeter limestone asphalt including tack coat for Nikajack Lane, quantity four hundred, unit price a hundred and twenty-three dollars, subtotal forty-nine thousand two hundred dollars. Temporary striping of Nikajack Lane, quantity one point six, unit price eight hundred dollars, total one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. They did list a grand total here, comes to five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars even. Again, this is Northwest Georgia Paving, Appeal Box five seven eight, Calhoun, Georgia. Contact submitted by Brian Roberts. Has their package. Okay, they just, they have just to know they would like us to email them the results. This one here is from CW Matthews Marietta. You can see this is also a sealed packet, it's not been tampered. This one here, first item, asphalt patching including milling Nikajack Road, quantity four hundred, unit price is a hundred and fifty dollars, subtotal is sixty thousand. The nine point five five millimeter blend asphalt topping including tack coat Nikajack Road, quantity four thousand, is a hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents, subtotal four hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. Temporary striping of Nikajack Road, quantity of twenty, unit price six hundred dollars, total is twelve thousand dollars even. The nine point five five millimeter limestone asphalt including tack coat Nikajack Lane, quantity four hundred, unit price is a hundred and five dollars, subtotal forty-two thousand. Temporary striping of Nikajack Lane, quantity one point six, unit price six hundred, total of nine hundred and sixty dollars. Proposal submitted and is effective for ninety days. Again, company CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., sixteen hundred, Kevinview Drive, Marietta, Georgia. Contact is Michael, I don't want to butcher that, but he's the vice president. This is, and there was no grand total, so we'll have to add those up. So that's their packet. Fourth and last sealed bid here, this is from Bartow Paving Company. This one's not been tampered with either. Okay, again, Bartow Paving Company, Inc., asphalt patching including milling Nikajack Road, quantity four hundred, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents for a subtotal of seventy-five thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars even. The nine point five five millimeter blend asphalt topping including tack coat Nikajack Road, quantity of four thousand, unit price a hundred and twelve dollars and twelve cents, subtotal four hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Temporary striping Nikajack Road, quantity of twenty, six hundred and ninety-six dollars per unit, is thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars even. The nine point five millimeter limestone asphalt including tack coat Nikajack Lane, quantity four hundred, is a hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-four cents for a total of forty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. Temporary striping Nikajack Lane, one point six quantity, six hundred and ninety-six dollars per unit, is one thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents for a total bid of fifty, excuse me, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand five dollars and sixty cents. Proposal shall remain in effect for ninety days. Bartow Paving Company, Inc., one thousand fifty-five, Rolling Lang Springs Road, Carterville, Georgia. Brian Bullock, Chief Estimator. All right. Very happy to see that we had good participation. There's not a lot of companies in our region that do paving, and so we appreciate them taking an interest in Walker County and willing to help us with our paving projects and be part of our solution going forward. Okay, the next item, number three, is a mutual aid agreement between the United States Department of Interior, the National Park Service, the Chickamauga Chattanooga Military, National Military Park, Walker County Government, and the Walker County Sheriff's Office. This here is an intergovernmental agreement that is put in place so we can work with the Park Service if they had an incident that we had to help them, assist them with on a mutual aid basis, or if they had to come out into the county outside of the park area to assist us. Sometimes these things happen when you have maybe a high-speed chase, or if they were to have a fire, if the park was to catch on fire, these type of things, these mutual aid agreements are very common. So I want to brag on our county attorney here a little bit, Mr. Matt Williamson, sitting there at the end. He went through this thing with a fine-tooth comb, and he found a lot of information in here that was dated, and some of the code sections had been updated in the US Code. And so he went through and researched this and found those, and sent back a letter of recommendations of enhancements, improvements, and changes to this agreement. And every one of them, they validated and recognized that our guy was right, and that they had let this slip through the cracks and they were using old documentation. And Walker County showed the US government that we've got some smart people on our team. So thank you, Matt, for doing that. Absolutely. So we love our US government partners, but it's always good to let them know that we've got smart people in Walker County. So with that, I'm not going to bore you with all the fine print of reading this, because this is pretty typical, it should be in your packet, it will be online. I don't want to put anybody asleep here tonight, but this is just really standard operating procedure to work in a partnership if there's ever an incident that we need to support each other. So is there any questions or comments about this before we sign this into the record of accepting this agreement? And again, I'm very confident, because our number one guy has gone through this with great diligence. Also, this has a place on here and was also signed by our sheriff back on August sixth, two thousand and eighteen, so he has also reviewed these documents, and I believe actually probably initiated this dialogue and brought it over to our office for our legal counsel. two thousand and eighteen, so he has also reviewed these documents, and I believe actually probably initiated this dialogue and brought it over to our office for our legal counsel. So we're now finalizing this agreement and putting that into the record. Okay, now, these are the fun things we like to do. So we love to do these proclamations and recognize different people, different causes, and different things going on in our community. So this one right here is a proclamation declaring September the eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, as Patriot Day in Walker County. So this time, so I don't butcher it up, I'm going to ask our county attorney, Matt Williamson, if he would take and read this proclamation to us. We do have an event coming up. There we go, he's got it there. We do have an event coming up on September the eleventh that we will be doing in conjunction with our fire department. It's being led by our fire chief, Blake Hodge. So we'll be putting out more information in the next couple of days for people that want to take part of that, and we'll be inviting the local media to come and be a part of that as well. So this time, Matt, if you'll read this.
By the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, a proclamation, Patriot Day. Whereas the terrorist attacks that occurred on September eleventh, two thousand and one, claimed the lives of nearly three thousand people, including some four hundred emergency workers, and whereas we grieved as a nation, but were also heartened by the acts of courage and compassion demonstrated by our firefighters, law enforcement officers, and other first responders who worked tirelessly to render aid during a chaotic ordeal. And whereas although our nation was forever changed, in the events of that tragic day failed to divide us, instead they unified our country and reminded us that we stand united. And whereas on December eighteenth, two thousand and one, Congress and President George W. Bush approved Public Law one oh seven dash eighty-nine, designating September eleventh of each year as Patriot Day in remembrance of those whose lives were lost, and in honor of the brave and selfless heroes who risked their lives that day. And whereas the community is encouraged to attend events like Walker County Cities on Our Knees and a remembrance service at the Walker County Courthouse on nine eleven to hear stories from first responders, now therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, do hereby proclaim September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, as Patriot Day in Walker County, Georgia, in recognition of the courageous men and women who gave their lives in service to others to protect our liberties. I encourage all citizens to observe this day with patriotism and thankfulness. In witness thereof, I have hereby to set my hand and cause the seal of Walker County to be affixed this thirtieth day of August in the year two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you, Matt. Failed to mention, we will also, as this proclamation mentions, we will have a Walker County Cities on Our Knees events and a remembrance service at the, in Walker County. I believe that's going to be at our Civic Center. It'll be at our Civic Center, so you'll hear more information about that. So that's a, these are both public events that we're doing. We're inviting and encouraging the public to come out and take part of these. These are strictly free events. Just want you to come and help us remember our brave and those that gave their ultimate sacrifice that day to help protect our country and to serve our country, the innocent civilians that lives were taken from them, approximately three thousand people. So it's with great honor as your sole commissioner to sign this proclamation and declaring that Walker County as well declares September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, as Patriot Day. This will also be attested by a clerk. Okay, we have a resolution here where we're making some amendments to our budget. And what we've been doing to practice good accountability and good stewardship of our budget, we said earlier in this budget cycle that our budget was our best guess and our best foot's forward, and it was a balanced budget. And so we knew along the way we were going to have to make some modifications and have budget amendments to our budget in order to meet the needs that we have. And sometimes we find things that didn't cost as much as we thought they were going to cost, and sometimes we find things that are greater need than we realize. But what we're doing here with this resolution, and it's quite wordy, and Matt's going to have a real fun time reading all of this, because it gets quite long, and you've got a lot of long general ledger numbers and all that. But we have not raised how much, you know, money's going into the budget. This is just clearly moving funds into different departmental areas in order to satisfy the budget needs that we have, to balance things out and to accommodate things. I will point out here lastly, and we talked about this at our last meeting, is we were awarded a grant again this year through the state of Georgia and the federal government on our transit system. So we got transit buses that are roughly around forty-six thousand dollars or so, and we only had to pay ten percent of that. So we ended up paying, I think it was around forty-six hundred dollars or so per bus. And so the last entry in here is where we're bringing into our budget and adopting that grant. And so those grant applications for those buses is several hundred thousand dollars. So when he talks to the point about the transit, he'll mention the federal grant and the state grant, and that we have our ten percent local match. This also includes the six buses we just received, and then also the three buses that we will be getting in the near future. Correct? So, because we're having to pay our ten percent match for those. So this is a total of nine transit buses that we paid ten percent of. And so it's not that we're spending these hundreds of thousands of dollars. The state and federal grant pays that ninety percent. So Matt, if you would.
I'll tell you what I'm going to do for you folks. I'm going to read it, but I'm going to spare you the line items this week, because I think that this is a relatively short resolution, but the line items just sort of artificially inflated. But I know we're committed to transparency. The line items are listed here, and you can read them for yourself, but I think that I might trip over the line item, so I'll just read the resolution, omitting those. This is Resolution R. zero three four dash eighteen, an omnibus resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget to allocate funding for the coroner, allocate funding for the transportation department, allocate funding for the animal shelter, and appropriate funds to reflect grant matching for transit. Whereas OCGA Section thirty-six dash eighty-one dash three provides for a county to adopt a summary line item legal level of budgetary control whereby the governing authority controls county spending. And whereas Resolution R. dash zero nineteen dash seventeen established the legal level of budgetary control for Walker County at the summarized object classification level, e.g., personal expenses, operating expenses, capital outlay. And whereas the coroner has requested the additional funding. And whereas the transportation department requires additional funding for fuel. And whereas the Walker County Animal Shelter requires additional funding for vehicles, healthcare, and energy expenses. And whereas Walker County has received grant funding from the federal government for the purchase of new vehicles for the Transit Department. And whereas a budget amendment is necessary to reflect the income and grant funding and the source of matching funds from the County General Fund. Therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Walker County Governing Authority real allocates funding from employee, health clinic, contract, labor, professional, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, to coroner, medical examiner. And, Part Two, that the Walker County Governing Authority real allocates funding from road department, capital, other equipment, construction, in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to maintenance and shop, energy vehicle, gasoline, diesel. And that the Walker County Governing Authority real allocates funding from employee, health clinic, technical contractual services, in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars to the following line items in the following amounts. To animal shelter, capital vehicle, general, in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. To animal shelter, healthcare expense, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. To animal shelter, energy, water, and sewer, in the amount of a thousand dollars. To animal shelter, energy, electricity, in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars. To animal shelter, energy, bottled gas, in the amount of one thousand six hundred dollars. And to animal shelter, repair vehicles, in the amount of ten thousand fifty dollars, for a total of forty-five thousand dollars. And, Part Four, that the Walker County Governing Authority real allocates funding from transit salary and wages, in the amount of forty-one thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-four cents, to county transit, capital vehicle, general. And that the Walker County Governing Authority accepts into federal grant, capital indirect, an amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-two cents. And accepts into state grant, capital indirect, an amount of forty-one thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. And that the Walker County Governing Authority allocates funding from federal grant, capital indirect, in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-two cents. And allocates funding from state grant, capital indirect, in the amount of forty-one thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-four cents, to county transit, capital vehicle, general.
On that Part Four there, on the transit buses, that first forty-one thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-four cents is the local match. We didn't originally have that in our budget. I didn't realize those buses had been ordered when we were working on the budget. They were actually ordered by the prior administration, and it was not communicated when we were doing the budget. So we had some excess funding out of the salary, so we were able to keep it within that department to come up with a match that we needed. And then the second item there that he read is we had to accept the revenue of the three hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. We had to bring that in as a revenue, and then you see it's just a paper transaction. We never received those hard dollars. We received the buses, and then it shows the expenditure, because we have to book that full value on our books, showing that we received that grant and the tracking of that grant. So this is just some good general housekeeping to be able to take advantage of a three hundred and almost thirty thousand dollar grant for Walker County. So those funds were not exchanged. Again, we received buses for that, but we have to document the financial side of that. Good news, there was at least four of these buses that were put on the road today. Everything on the buses was ready to go when we picked those up in Atlanta last week, except we had to get the tag registered on those, get those in, and we had to change the radio communication system over into those out of the old buses. So hopefully by the first of next week, if they didn't get completed today, we'll have all six of those new buses on the road and have those running. The other three will be in sometime first of the spring or early summer. Any questions or comments on this resolution to adopt and move forward this funding? Hearing none, we'll sign this into the record. Again, all resolutions are attested. Matt, thank you for reading that. It was a great idea to leave those account numbers out. That was much, much easier to deal with. You can see how long those general ledger account numbers are for dealing with governmental accounting. Okay, one of the things too that we also had advertised in the paper is to start releasing information on our budget for FY nineteen. We have been working very hard on this, and we had, I think, about fifteen copies or so out there today. Here's an extra copy if somebody wants this. But this here has our, the budget department request from our constitutional officers. We have focused on our constitutional officers and getting those done first. We are continuing to work through the departments that fall under the commissioners' offices. We will be meeting with each of those department heads over the next few days and discussing the details of their needs for each of those departments. So this is the first release of this to get the five constitutional officers. This again is a line item detail that shows some historical data from twenty fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen actuels, the twenty eighteen adopted budget, the twenty eighteen any amendments that have been made since this original adoption, and then the two thousand and nineteen department request of what those constitutional officers have requested by each and every line item. So as this continues, this will end up being about a hundred pages when it's all said done, as we had last year. But just, we wanted to be transparent and give more information. Over the last several years prior to my administration, you got about two and a half, maybe three pages of information. And so we want the citizens to see that the money's been spent wisely. So as this process continues, you can look on our website, and we will be updating this as this information is put into request format through each of the additional departments. So here's an additional copy if somebody wants that. Okay, this time we'll adjourn our special call meeting, and we will now open up the floor for any public comment, open discussion, or questions from anyone here tonight, anything to do with county government in general. If you would step up to the podium and state your name for the record. Yes, sir, I'll be first.
Well, Mr. Commissioner and neighbors, I just have a comment or two and a question.
Okay, would you state your name for the record?
Yes, and we're about to do that in the hall, Provis, and this is my wife of fifty-three years, Norma.
Fantastic.
We came to Walker County to retire about twelve years ago, and we just simply love it, love everything. We love the people. We love living here. We love our old historic homes that we bought. We have, quite proud of it. And I just wanted to comment that tonight, I'm very impressed and moved about the way we do business in America. I've never been to a meeting of this before. And this is just, to me, just the essence of what America should be, that I can come here and share my heart and my mind for just a few minutes with the people that are paid to protect and serve me as well as my neighbors. I think that, I think specifically I have a question regarding the tax problems that we have in the county, which were just, I mean, a bolt of blue that I think just flowed everybody. Norma and I live and subsist totally on social security. We're approaching eighty years of age. We have health issues, and we would do anything in the world to get some raises of income, but unfortunately, social security hasn't gone up, I don't think, significantly in the last ten years. In other words, our income level has been stable for ten years. And over the last three years, we've incurred a seven hundred and forty-four percent increase in our property taxes in previous years. I just want to say that again, seven hundred and forty-four percent increase, with no increase in income. Everything around us in our lives has gone the other direction for income. And with full understanding and awareness of the awesome burden and responsibility that we have with the tremendous debt that the county has, there still appears to me to be two sides to every story. And the other side is, I think we need to fully understand, Norma and I do, and I'm sure maybe I could be speaking for some other elderly people in the county, of what provisions have been put in place to offer exemptions to people who absolutely can't do this.
Okay, there are exemptions that you can apply for if you haven't already at the Tax Commissioner's Office. Those are outlined on the back of your tax statement, because they are driven by age and also by income. And so you can look at that and consult directly with the Tax Commissioner's Office. They have two locations, one in Rock Springs and one up in Fairview area. And if you qualify for those, that's where you would have them assist you in signing up to get that implemented onto your property tax bill.
Well, as a matter of fact, of course, I did that immediately, turned to the phone call, and we even made a visit.
Years ago, years ago, that was.
Yeah, we did that, and then we did it recently when we were having a big increase.
But has it been taken away from us now?
Yes, uh-huh. The school tax was removed when we reached a certain age in our seventies, and now it's been put back on, our tax bill. And the increases have been in there, and just within the last year and a half, I called again and said that we're the people that we've been talking to about exemptions. Are we sure? Look at us. Look at our bill, look at our paperwork. You have access to all of the records. And tell us if we have everything that we're entitled to. Yes, sir, you sure do.
Is this, you have how many properties in Walker County? Is this, do you have any properties in Walker County?
One.
Just one. Is that listed as your homestead?
Yes, it is.
Okay. It's the age that you indicated, which Terry may be able to assist too, works in the assessor's office, is the manager, the chief assessor, I don't know why you would have acquired the school exemptions and then lose it. Any insight, Terry, why they would receive it and then a year or two later lose it?
Shouldn't, I had to book it there, bill and see what that said. Maybe the Health Facility and Services thing, the Public Health Facility and Services thing is now on there, it may have made it look like that you lost that.
Did you bring any of your bills with you tonight?
Sure did.
Okay, well, Terry and I would be more than happy after the meeting to talk and look at those with you and see if there's maybe been an error or something.
Okay, in the interest of not belaboring that and weighing on the patience of all here, I would just say that it's, I want to implore that we do not get so caught up in the problem that we have, that we lose sight of being compassionate to the people that occupy the residences that benefit the county in ways that only elderly people can, because we know the history, we are interested in our homes, all that sort of thing, are intangible sentimental emotional things that I think we can't lose total sight of. There are things that I hope that we understand that we need to consider on a compassionate basis beyond the value of the property. We need to also consider the ability of the occupants and owners of that property to pay. And give every consideration to that rather than being caught up totally in. What can we do to raise the money that we need to raise to pay this debt? And at the same time, make sure that we're not absolutely hamstring the people that have lived long enough to make the county as great as it really is.
And this team, as we indicated, has worked really hard because we are very compassionate and understanding and also live in this county and the community to try to keep from having at all costs to raise any taxes at all. And so we were trying to capture the growth of the new development and things and capture that additional income because the cost of providing services increases every single year for every local government across America. And so we have to continue to find ways to fund those services that people very much expect and require and should so. So it's a very much a balancing thing and that's why we wanted some of our customs officers to come tonight and talk about the process and the amount of debt and time that is being spent under this new administration, which started last year, trying to clean up some of the past mistakes, the financial mistakes, and to address the $70 million worth of debt that was out of control. And then when I took office, we basically didn't even have enough money in the bank to make the first month's payroll, much less pay the $3.5 million worth of outstanding bills. And so we have been on a long journey with our citizens trying to be able to provide just those basic services and survive as well as our citizens. So we're in that same boat of being in a survival mode. And I know that, as you indicated, 100%, spot on, Social Security has moved very little and from what I understand from other folks that I've talked to, a lot of times that gets eaten up by their Medicare, their Medicare supplements and their medical expenses, that one or 2% change they make on an infrequent basis. And so we are very sensitive to that and we do realize that, as stated earlier, we're not in a rich county per se, and we have a lot of just common everyday people like we all are that are just trying to survive.
Absolutely. I have absolutely no doubt or confusion whatsoever that everyone's heart is in the right place in this issue. I just wanted to take advantage of my opportunity as an American to come here and say that on a very personal level that it's pretty hard to get a 744% increase over a three-year period.
And get with us after the meeting, we'll look closer into that because that is above the norm of what it should have been. So I think we may find some things we can help you with.
Okay, I just want to say again, I appreciate it because I think you all are trying very, very hard.
Thank you.
To consider all the many, many factors of a very complicated problem that really, I'm glad we're paying you all to do it, we don't have to.
Well, we appreciate you all both coming tonight and participating and hope that you will come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Provis and Mrs. Provis. Thank you both.
And do you have anything you'd like to say?
No.
Okay, you tell me what I forgot to say, my guest.
Okay, anyone else that would like to speak and address the public meeting, please come forward. Okay, hearing none, again, thank you so much and don't be a stranger to this process. We have a regular scheduled meeting every second and fourth Thursday of the month right here at 6:00. We put the agenda information on Facebook and on our website and also on the front door. And so please stay involved and engage and be a part of the solution and part of moving Walker County forward. We have a great momentum going, we have everything moving in the right direction, and we want you to be a part of helping us move forward. So thank you for coming tonight, look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Those of you that I promised Walker Rock sticker, I gotta go to the truck and get them and I'll come back, so if you'd love it, just hang tight.